Welcome to our Monday, November 17th School Board meeting. We will start with our agenda approval, deletions, additions. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. You do have a revised agenda at your workstation with two revisions. Roman numeral seven A2 has been stricken and Roman numeral seven B1. There are some additional personnel recommendations. Those are at your workstations this evening. Thank you.
Motion to approve those changes?
We have a motion for Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second from Mrs. Talent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Is there any correspondence this evening, Ms. Kelly?
There is not, Mrs. Seuss. Thank you.
All right. We'll forego our committee updates and we're going to move into our official school board business topics consent agenda. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you. Seek board approval for the minutes from our regular and meet our regular meeting on November 3rd, our special board meeting on November 10th. Also seek board approval for the claims payroll and extracurricular expenditures you received in your packets last Thursday.
So moved.
We have a motion for Mrs. Talent and I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have no public comments regarding action items, so we're going to move into our official school board business topics regular agenda. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you again. We have a slew of recognitions tonight to make note of outstanding student achievement at Clark Middle School as well as the high school. We'll start with Clark Middle School. And so Mr. Stablin is going to talk to us about Midwest ACDA Honors Choir.
All right. Good evening. Thank you.
Is that on?
Is it on?
It's on.
Just talk loud.
Good evening. There we go. There we go. It's like, all right, that'd be easier. Good evening. Recently, we had four students from Clark who were selected to not only represent Clark but the entire state of Indiana in the Midwest Region ACDA Honors Choir. Tonight, we have Mrs. Arroyo who's our does a great job every day directing our choir, so I will invite her down to recognize her students.
Great. Thank you so much. These four individuals were selected out of almost 900 students that auditioned from over 11 different states throughout the Midwest region. So they are not only representing Clark, but they are representing the state of Indiana in this massive choir. The choir itself is going to be 155 students, but there was also three other choirs with middle school guys and two high school choirs as well. But we have four students from Clark that will be represented here for the ACDA Honor Choir. Our first student is Emmeline Turley.
Where will this concert be held?
The concert will be held in Milwaukee, Wisconsin at the end of February. Our next student is Lauren Pompey. Our next student is Sophia Munoz. And finally Gwen Hankins.
Okay, I think Mr. Enyer is next.
So we're going to recognize our cross-country teams for their state qualifications. Our first program, and I'm going to have the coaches come down to talk about them, is our boys' cross-country team and coaches Jeff Rody and Alex Thompson.
Hi. We had a great season this year. We had two young men qualify for the state championships. First is sophomore Luca Nevis, who ran the number eight time all-time in school history in the state meet. Come on down, Luca. This is Luca's first year at Lake Central. He came to us by way of Kentucky. Very proud of what he did this this season. So our our senior competitor in the state finals was Ben Pershan, who holds the number two time all-time here at Lake Central.
In our next program, we're going to talk about is our girls' cross-country team. I'm going to have Coach Garden and Coach Pirk come up.
Our girls had a great season. They won three regular season meets and ended regular season by winning DAC for the second year in a row. Macy Thompson was the overall champion. Chloe Neal, Lana Brugeman, Aubrey Neal, and Sarah Filippo were all conference as well. They were sectional champions for the seventh year in a row. Macy Thompson was the overall champion again. Chloe Neal, Lana Brugeman, Aubrey Neal, Sarah Filippo, and Roxanne Martinez were all sectional. They were regional champions for the second year in a row. Macy Thompson was the overall champion once again. And Chloe Neal and Lana Brugeman were all regional. They the girls ended their season by placing 13th at the state meet. Macy Thompson was the state runner-up, running a time of 1718, which is also a new school record. And Lana Brugeman was 24th overall, running a time of 1813, which was her season PR. These ladies had a great season and we can't can't wait to see what their futures hold. Lana Brugeman. Anna Brum. Anna Domingo. Sarah Filippo. Emma Friesma. Sophia Geller. Roxanne Martinez. Alexa Neal. Aubrey Neal. Chloe Neal. Marina Negretti. Kaitlyn Smith. Macy Thompson. And Maddie Underwood.
All right. Congratulations to our boys and girls cross-country teams for outstanding seasons. I am next to present some national merit awards, recommendations, acknowledgements. So the first one that I want to start off with is our national merit commended students. This year, we are fortunate to have eight national merit commended students. And what that means, this is where it gets a little complicated, but for their performance on the 2024 PSAT exam, these students placed in the top 50,000 students across the nation. And we are fortunate to have eight of them here at Lake Central High School. So again, we'll start with our national merit commended students. So Atira Aneki. Victoria Comida. Addison Dolosiski. Anna Gierman. Anna Gierman. Allison Hupenthal. Cameron Reddick. Way to go Cam. I've got a few more. We've got two more. Okay, our next group of National Merit Students, these are our National Merit semifinalists. And these students, we have three of them here at Lake Central, they scored in the top 1% of all Indiana juniors on that 2024 PSAT exam. So again, top 1% of all Indiana juniors. And we are so fortunate to have three of them here. All right, the next group I want to recognize is some of our teachers at Lake Central High School. Over the summer, our AP exam scores come in, and this summer, we happened to be in a meeting when we started getting a lot of the exams and the scores and the feedback and seeing how our students did. And maybe because we were just sitting there, we were all together, we were all in a meeting, and the data was kind of all in front of our face, but our administration team was just taken back by how successful this past year at AP testing and our scores were. Later on in this meeting, I will do a presentation, a recap of all of our scores, and share that information with you. But I did want to take some time and recognize our AP teachers. There's a lot of work that goes into teaching an AP class, extra training, just a lot of extra stuff that our teachers do. And their plates are full, as is already. So I wanted to recognize those teachers. But not only our teachers, I also wanted to recognize our AP Test Coordinator, Mrs. Beth Toth. She works with us in the office, and she is a data guru. If there's ever anything you need to know about AP testing, it is Beth Toth who will give you that information. So I'm going to start by calling Beth down first, and then I want to share some information about some of our teachers as well. So first, our AP guru, Mrs. Beth Toth. All right, and our first teacher is Mr. Joe Baffia. And Mr. Baffia had a 90% pass rate in AP Macroeconomics. So for those who aren't familiar with how AP tests our score, a pass rate is when a student earns a three or higher, and that three or higher earns them college credit. So 90% of the students in Mr. Baffia's class earn that three or higher. Next is Mrs. Carrie Brown, and she had 100% pass rate in AP Chem. Mrs. Danielle Carr is our Computer Science teacher. I don't recall seeing her here, but we wanted to recognize her for all of her hard work with our Computer Science program. Next is Mr. Josh Clark. Mrs. Clark is here, but you can get his when you come down. All right, and then next up is Mrs. Catherine Clark. And in Mrs. Clark's class, she had a 96.4 pass rate in AP English Language and Composition and a 95.2 pass rate in AP Seminar. All right, our next teacher is Mrs. Jen Fandel. Mrs. Fandel had 100% pass rate in AP Precalculus, not just this year, but also last year as All right, our next teacher we want to recognize is Mr. Joe Fox, who works with our AP Statistics All right, our next teacher is Mr. Ralph Holden, who teaches AP Psychology. Teacher of the Year last year. Our next teacher is Mr. Todd Iwema, and he actually started the AP Cyber Security Program, teaching our networking class this year. So he wasn't teaching it last year, but he's starting that program this year and has done a lot of work in getting that up and started and off the ground. So we'll give that to him tomorrow. Next is Mrs. Claire Kullen Schmidt, one of our AP US History teachers. I don't recall seeing her. Mrs. Joan Loden, who had a 100% pass rate in AP Calculus BC. Mr. Brian McNamara, another one of our AP US History teachers. Mr. Nick Podger-Barrick, who teaches AP Science. Mr. Jeff Rody, who had a 93.9% pass rate in AP Physics. Mrs. Amanda Skyler is one of our AP Human Geography teachers. Mrs. Julie Schubert, one of our AP Environmental Science teachers. Mr. Elliot Smith, who does our AP Music Theory. Mrs. Jeanette Snellson, who had a 92.9% pass rate in AP English Language and Composition. Mr. Brian Zalonic, who is one of our AP US History teachers. Mrs. Rachel Underwood, from AP Macro or Micro? Dustin Verputen, Dr. Dustin Verputen, who is our AP Bio teacher. Mrs. Amy Wilkins, who is one of our AP Human Geography teachers. Ms. Rhonda York, who had a 94.2% pass rate in AP English Literature and Composition and a 91.7 pass rate in AP Research. And Mrs. Teresa Zentz, one of our AP Psychology teachers. So again, I really just wanted to thank all of you for being here tonight. Thank you for all the extra work that you do. It's amazing to say that we have 100% pass rate in courses like AP Chemistry, AP Precalculus, AP Precalculus. It's amazing what our teachers do and what our students do. So thank you for all that you do and all that you contribute to Lake Central High School.
This concludes our recognition portion of the meeting. We will continue with the regular business of the board. If you have other things to get on to, we certainly understand if you need to exit at this time.
Hey, parents on your way out, we thank you very, very much for your dedication to your child and to their education at Lake Central. Appreciate it.
What? Sorry. It was unfair.
I was underprepared.
Larry.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking the board's approval for the Personnel Recommendations, the revised copy that you received this evening.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second from Dr. Malco. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. For my second item, I am seeking the board's approval for the Collective Bargaining Agreement and the Administrative and Classified Pay Raises.
So moved.
Motion for Mrs. Talent. I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my last item, I'm going to bring up Mr. Chris Enyard to give the high school
This fall, we had a really great year. We had 132 girls, 243 boys. That's up by about 40 kids from last fall. Scholar athletes, these are the kids that maintain a 3.66 GPA or higher. We had 164 of those, which is about 43%. Usually, we're around 38, 39%, so we had some very academic kids this fall. Doing athletic conference standings in the Girls' Cross Country, and last year, we were the all-sports winners for the girls. We had the lowest amount of points, so we have a plaque that we got from the conference. But Girls' Cross Country was first, golf was also first, soccer and volleyball were both third, Boys' Cross Country was fourth, football tied for fifth, soccer was in a three-way tie for first place, and tennis finished in second place. Our IHSA postseason results, Girls' Cross Country were sectional and regional champs, and they're actually 13th place at state. And as you heard before, Macy Thompson finished second overall at state, and Lana Brugeman finished 24th to make her medalist in all-state. Girls' Golf won sectionals, regionals, and advanced to the state meet for the second consecutive year. Girls' Soccer lost in the sectional championship game. Girls' Volleyball lost in sectionals. It was the first game of the sectionals against Crown Point, which was really the championship game. Whoever won that was going to win the sectional, and we lost in four sets. Boys' Cross Country, they were the sectional championships, and again, as you heard, Ben Pershan and Luca Nevis advanced to the state meet. Football lost in sectionals, boys' soccer lost in the regional championship, and boys' tennis lost in the sectional championship. And that came down to the number-one doubles. It was 2-2, and we lost in three sets. So against Munster, who has won, I believe, 37 or so in a row. So we'll get them next year. That's, I took that from Ralph Holden. That was, he told me afterwards. Income, game receipts, we had, season passes, $147,886. Advertisements or corporate sponsorships were $8,750. Fall team fees, $128,575 and 3 cents. Concessions, $20,106.17. And weight room and training room fee, so far, we've collected $11,590 for a total of $316,907.20 for the fall. Fall expenses, game workers, that's security, ticket tapers, supervisors, $24,275. That's up about $6,000 from last year. Officials, $23,198.9. And as I talked about last year with where the LCAOA was... And as I talked about last year with where the LCAOA was increasing some of our fees as our signer, that was a 50, almost 58% increase from the fall of 2024. Field equipment and maintenance, $19,329.98. Equipment, team gear and fees, $151,073.85. Training room and weight room, $18,479.93. Concessions, $16,424.74. And miscellaneous, that's all the, covers everything else under the sun. Hospitality rooms, coaches, membership dues, Letterman Rewards, as it says, was $13,255.83 for a total of $266,065.42. So, it's a good thing we banked some money, because I think as a winner in fall sports with the increase in officials' costs, we're going to need that extra funds to help cover those costs. So, that is our, how our fall went. So, we use the Lake County Athletic Officials Association as an assigner, and they kind of set the rate of what it would cost for them to continue assigning for us. So... Not really, in this area. So, yeah, they, I mean, they assign for the NCC, the PCC, and the GSSE, which is all conferences in this area as a whole, and then there's a couple other DAC schools that use them, and then others pick and choose maybe for a sport here and there. So, as a, as a conference, we have an assigner that the conference for football and soccer. One's the LCAOA, the other one's a different person. And the other sports, I know Valpo and Portage use the LCAOA a lot. Some of the others use other local officials that they know to kind of be their assigner, but not under a true organization like that, LCAOA. You're welcome. Is there any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our Director of Primary Education, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening. For my first item, I am seeking your approval for the professional leave request in your packet.
Bill for approval?
We have a motion from Dr. Malco. I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my second item, I wanted to recap the parent-teacher conferences that we just held this past Friday. We hosted the conferences at the elementary level. We had a fantastic turnout. I did some research, and according to the National Center for Education Statistics, approximately 75% of parents attend parent-teacher conferences. We surpassed this average, and we surpassed our percentage from last year as well. Last year, we had 84.3% of our parents attend conferences. This year, we reached 86.4%. So, that's 2.1% more than we had last year. And then I had asked for some comments from our parents and from our teachers, and from our parents, they liked the option of either virtual or in-person conferences. They liked being able to sit and talk with the counselors. They were very appreciative of the option for in-person or virtual, and then many parents preferred to meet virtually. So, I'm glad we offered that option. Our teachers were very happy with their parent-teacher turnout and overall had a very pleasant experience. They also stated that parents seemed glad to be able to meet and discuss the progress of their student. So, it was a wonderful day.
Mrs. Bracy, Mrs., Dr. Bracy, I should say. Could you put those numbers in a report?
Sure.
Listen to me.
Absolutely.
It's just so hard to hear down here. Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you. And our Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Shuniman.
Thank you. For my first item, I'm seeking the Board's approval for the professional leave requests included in your board packet.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second from Mrs. Talent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my second item, I would like to invite Mrs. Erin Novak back up to share the advanced placement data with us. As she comes up here, Mrs. Novak, I didn't give you a heads up, but just thought I should get it on the record here. This weekend, Mrs. Novak will be recognized as the District One Principal of the Year at the IASP Conference.
Thank you, Mrs. Shuniman, for that.
Did everybody get a copy?
Yes.
All right, I know it's a long evening, so I will try to go through this very quickly, but this is one of the best nights where I can stand here and brag about all of the great things happening at Lake Central High School, and this is one of them. Like we talked about a few minutes ago, you were able to see some of our teachers who have put a lot of time and effort into building this program and making it what it is today. So, just a quick few recaps to get started. We offer 22 AP classes at Lake Central High School. That is a large number. If you compare us to some of the smaller parochial schools in the area, we are definitely exceeding that number by quite a bit. So, 22, with the cybersecurity program being new here this year, we are coming in at 22 AP courses. So, for AP exam scoring, I know I mentioned it earlier, we definitely want to see students coming in at three or above. In Indiana, an AP score of three or higher is awarded as credit automatically at any of the state's public institutions. So, you'll hear, you'll hear me refer to the score of three quite a bit. So, that's always the goal, for our students to achieve that score of three or higher. So, when we were recognizing some of our teachers, when I was saying 100% pass rate, 100% of their students that took their AP course were reaching that three on their exam. So, they're walking out of that class with college credit for the work that they did in those AP courses. Some of our numbers at a glance, our total AP students for 2025 was 946. So, all of this data is based on the 2024-25 school year, last year. So, we had 946 total AP students, and those 946 students took 1,608 exams, which is another large number. So, our total students out of that population with a score of three or better was 581, which equals 61% of our students earning that three or better. So, that's incredible. I put this table of score summaries for the Board. I know it's a lot of data to look at right here, but with your hard copies, you know, when you have a little bit more time, you can sit and look at. It breaks down the scores of ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives. So, remember, we want our students scoring three or higher to get those college credits. And if you look at the numbers, you can see that the majority of our students are falling in those three, fours, and fives. Independent study means that the student did not take that class here at Lake Central High School. A lot of times, if they're a native speaker of a language, like we had a student take Chinese, they can do that independent study on their own and then take the exam. We also had a few students complete Physics C, Electricity, and Physics C Mechanics as an independent study course. So, some of the independent study courses will fluctuate throughout the years. Well, I mean, scholarships, when schools are looking to award scholarships, they may look at their scores and maybe give more money based on the scores. I mean, obviously, yeah, it's better, but we want to see them at that three or higher. So, it would definitely tie into scholarship money as well. I know it's really important to compare how Lake Central is doing in comparison to the state of Indiana and then globally as well. So, if you look all the way to the right, again, I know it's a big table with a lot of numbers, but what I wanted to highlight were the courses that are higher than the Indiana average and the Indiana global, I'm sorry, the global average. So, let me say that again. The courses that scored higher than Indiana and our global testers. So, if you look, just at first glance, all of those yellow classes scored higher. So, we are exceeding those averages. Indiana and global. And even the ones where we're not. So, US History, for example, down at the bottom, you can see that we are very, very close on that. We're exceeding Indiana in that one. We just have a little bit to go for the global testers. So, even in the ones where we're not, we are, we're doing pretty well, and we're getting close to those, those averages. But overall, the majority of our classes are scoring higher than the Indiana and global test takers. This is just a breakdown of how many of our students earned a three or higher. One thing that I noticed when I was looking at this graph, 2020, you kind of saw a little dip after 2020 in that '21 school year, but from 2021 up until the current day, you can see that we are growing, and that's what we want to see. So, we are definitely making positive trends in our students earning that three or higher. What the College Board does is break them down into AP Scholars, just some different recognitions. Again, these are things that they can put on resumes, college applications. So, an AP Scholar is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. AP Scholar with Honor, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then AP Scholar with Distinction, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. So, kind of, you know, makes your brain work a little bit there. But if you look at this pie chart, the AP Scholar with Distinctions, that's our biggest chunk of the pie. So, our students are doing an incredible job earning that AP Scholar with Distinction. 43% of our AP Scholars, 265 of our AP test takers are broken down into these categories, and 43% of them are earning that distinction category. So, again, they're doing incredible stuff. So, 28% of our total takers, test takers, fall into the AP Scholar category. We recognized these teachers earlier, but I wanted to break that down. The pictures that you see are from our first faculty meeting. When we welcomed the teachers back, we presented them with little glass trophies for them to put on their, on their desk or on their, in their, display in their classroom, just so there's a visible reminder of how great they did. We're very proud of that. The AP Capstone is a relatively new diploma. It was first offered at Lake Central High School back in 2022. The AP Capstone diploma is granted to students who earn scores of three or higher in AP Seminar and AP Research, so they must take those two AP courses, and they also need to take four additional AP exams of their choosing. And then, we also have the AP Seminar and Research Certificate that's granted to students who earn scores of three or higher in both AP Seminar and AP Research. What I noticed from this data, if you look at the purple, the darker column, in 2023, we had 10 students earning that AP Capstone diploma. Fast forward to 2025, we have doubled that number, and we have 20 students who have earned that diploma. So, again, great positive trends that we're making. No. So, AP Seminar and AP Research is very close to Language Arts. That's where they're doing a lot of research and coming up with, there's a lot of writing. So, I think that's why people equate it with, with Language Arts. But they also take four additional AP exams, so it could, that could be math, science, psychology, yes. So, these are pictures of our AP Capstone diploma students. So, that was our recent class of 2025. Again, we don't get the scores until July is usually when we find it, so we don't really know if they are going to have that credentialing until after graduation. So, we had 20 students from the class of 2025. We have three students in the class of 2026 who have already made all the qualifications. So, we are off to a great start for the class of 2026. And that is the majority of our AP teachers. Mr. Smith taught AP Chemistry. He retired recently. Mrs. Carrie Brown took over for him, and she's doing an outstanding job with that program. And that's it. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Ramallah.
Thank you. My only item tonight is to give the Board an update on our Behavior Grant. So, as a reminder, this was a competitive grant that we were awarded from the Indiana Department of Education in the spring of 2025. So, we have gotten to work this school year. The grant is focused on supporting students with disabilities and behavior in the elementary schools. So, the few things we're targeting, the elementary principals and I are participating in a book study. We are reading the book Leadership in Behavior Support. That was published by Safe and Civil Schools. And so, we're meeting with consultants. All of our grant work is supported by Threshold Learning Consultants, which is a group based in Chicago. And so, we are meeting with consultants from TLC twice a month for about 90 minutes. We spend 45 minutes together in a whole group via Zoom discussing the latest reading, and then the principals have 45 minutes to then, after our discussion, kind of work on what we've talked about. So, in addition to that 90 minutes, they have access to an online portal with additional resources and sort of 24-hour support from the TLC consultants if they have additional questions or additional things they want support with related to behavior. In addition to that, we have about five to six days a month of onsite behavior support from the consultants through TLC. So, they are onsite in our buildings. They are working with the resource teachers in all six elementary schools, also our behavior support programs at Pfeiffer and at Clark. So, what we're trying to do is improve that transition from Pfeiffer to Clark, so we're trying to get some more consistency between those programs. So, the teachers and principals have access to referral packets that they can complete with information about students, and then based on that information, the consultants from TLC plan their days in the district and kind of bounce around and go where they're needed. So, the, we're monitoring the success of our grant, or what we're reporting out to the Department of Ed is our out, in, and out-of-school suspensions for students with disabilities and our seclusion restraint and how we're using that. So, hoping to see both of those trend down throughout the course of this year. So, I just wanted to share that with the Board, and any questions?
What did you say the name of the grant was?
It's the behavior, I don't know if it had an official name. The idea, we just called it the Behavior Support Grant.
Behavior Support Grant. And how many of those were awarded in our state, do you know?
Oh, my goodness, Dr. Malco, I believe it was around 50.
50?
Mm-hmm, might have been less. I can find the exact number.
Oh, that's okay, I'm just curious how. And then, it was competitive, as you said.
It was a competitive grant, and they didn't give us any dollar amount or much guidance, so we kind of, we aimed high, and we got around $115,000.
And you've put the money into talented people to come in and model appropriate behavior in the classroom?
Yes, yeah, with the idea we can learn throughout this year and build capacity and take those skills to move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you repeat tightly the book?
The book is called Leadership in Behavior Support: An Administrator's Guide, and it's published by Safe and Civil Schools. Thank you.
And last but not least, our Director of Business Services, Mr. James.
Thank you. My only item this evening is to seek your approval for the donations that were included in your board packet.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Dr. Malco.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Kelly. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our public comments. We have three people signed up, so we will start with Ms. Ella Crowley.
Good evening. My name is Ella Crowley, and I'm here with Leana Navarro to discuss a topic that has instantly affected the Lake Central Soccer Program.
Honey, you're going to have to talk really loud and closer to the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, almost like you're eating the mic.
Okay.
And talk real loud, like you're yelling.
Like, this is good?
Yeah.
Do you want me to restart?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ella Crowley, and I'm here with Leana Navarro to discuss a topic that has instantly affected the Lake Central Soccer Program. I'm not sure if the school board has been made aware of the situation at hand. Recently, our coach, Jeremy Rainwater, has been let go from his position as head coach of the Girls' varsity soccer team. As a result of this, a petition has been made in support of Coach Rainwater, and I would like to share it with the board. We, the undersigned players, parents, and supporters of the Lake Central Girls' Soccer Program, respectfully request the reinstatement of Coach Jeremy Rainwater as our varsity soccer coach. His absence has immediately impacted the sense of family and guidance that he fostered within our team. Coach Rainwater is more than just a coach. He is a mentor, role model, and a leader who has dedicated countless hours of his personal time to helping us grow as athletes and individuals. Under his guidance, players have gained confidence, discipline, and resilience. His encouragement pushes us to strive for excellence on the field while his compassion and support help us navigate challenges off the field. After a tough loss against Chesterton, sitting at the eighteen-yard line, Rainwater said something we'll never forget. "I wouldn't want to be here with any other team but you guys." That has stuck with us ever since. The lessons Coach Rainwater teaches extend far beyond soccer. He instills values of teamwork, respect, and perseverance, qualities that shape us not only as players but as people who will carry these lessons into our future. Coach often asks us to reflect on our why, the purpose behind what we do. As a team, we've realized that he embodies that purpose for us. Coach Rainwater is our why. Removing him from this position threatens to take away an influence that has been deeply positive and transformative for this team. We believe that the strength, unity, and determination of our team is directly connected to Coach Rainwater's leadership. We urge the athletic department and school administration to reconsider the decision and allow him to return to coaching us. All right.
Within just two days, our petition received one hundred forty-four signatures from students, parents, and teammates who all share the same hope to bring our coach back. As two varsity soccer players that this has directly impacted, we felt the need to take matters into our own hands. The day after we found out we wouldn't have Coach on the sidelines with us next season, we sent an email to Mr. Enyard requesting a meeting, and Sue found out that he's not allowed to discuss the matter with us. We then reached out to Ms. Novak for the same reason, and although we understand she's extremely busy, we didn't get an email back until earlier today asking to meet later in the week. We felt the situation was something that couldn't hold off much longer. With no other avenues left, we decided the only responsible next step was to come here tonight. And we hope that by bringing our voices and the voices of the one hundred forty-four people who stand with us, real consideration will be given to this decision. All we are asking for is transparency, communication, and the opportunity for our concerns to be taken seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then we have Mr. John Quinlan.
No chance of me following that.
Okay, so that's all we have. Anybody else wanted to come up and say anything that didn't sign their name? If you could tell us your name, please.
Yeah. My name is Eric Humberg, A-R-I-C for Eric. I'm new to the school district. My son started kindergarten this year. It was really exciting to start with this program and hear all the exciting things and all the awards. Tonight have been phenomenal to understand. One of the questions I had regarding the parent-teacher conferences, what metrics what metrics are measured with the parent-teacher conferences? Is it just how many people attend, or are there other metrics that also are measured?
Are you referring to the statistics I shared earlier?
Yeah, a little bit about that, like more specifically, the feedback that the teachers get surrounding how the school year is going, the cadence of the school year, where does that feedback go and how is that measured and then enacted on with the school board?
Well, this is my first time sharing it with them tonight. We just had the conferences on Friday.
Right.
But I did ask all of the principals to gather feedback from their teachers and from parents who attended the conferences, and those are some of the responses I received. So that's where that came from. As far as the percentages and the numbers, we base that on how many students have a representative come to the conference. So that means that eighty-six, I think I said eighty-six point four of our students had somebody come or in person or virtually to a conference.
Right, so I understand that. My question more specifically, I guess, is the direct feedback from parents. You said the principals are going to gather that.
Correct.
How do you take that information and then enact on that information from the parents? Where is that? How does that fed up to you guys?
Well, last year, we had a couple of people request to have the conferences like on a Friday for convenience, and so we did listen to that feedback. And this year, they were held on a Friday. So we do take into consideration what our parents say and what our teachers say as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just, like I said, I have some concerns that I don't want to bring up today because I'm still learning everything, so I don't want to.
Okay.
But I would like, I'd love to try to understand better how that feedback is fed up to you guys to make sure that things that are concerning as a parent to my young child can be mitigated.
Now, I cannot guarantee you that all the comments come back to us.
No, no, I expect, I mean, you, there's a lot of kids. I respect that, so.
Okay.
I just, if there is an overwhelming thing, just how that would be.
I would suggest to you or anybody else who has a concern to not wait till parent-teacher conferences to reach out to your building principal of your child's school and start there. And ask those questions that are important to you and share concerns you have, starting with there.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to board comments and consideration of future agenda items. Mrs. Talon.
What a wonderful evening. Congratulations to our teachers and also Mrs. Novak. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Malco.
Right, it was a fun night. These are the things that we love to experience in here. And I can tell you, sir, that, yeah, we will have follow-up with comments about parent-teacher because it's important to us to know that we're working well with our parents. So thanks for being here, everybody. And students, it spoke. You did a nice job. That's exactly how it works.
Yes.
You didn't scream and yell and get mad. You just came up and read your 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 situation. And very nice job on that. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly.
I will just echo what Dr. Malco and Louise had to say and also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, that too. And, you know, thank you to our community for believing in us and passing that referendum so we can continue to do the great things we're doing at Lake Central. So that'll turn it over to Dr. Baraco for the board calendar, future activities.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. Just a reminder, we only have one meeting in December, and that is on Monday, December eighth, here in this room, seven PM. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?